The regular meeting of the Keansburg Board of Education will be held in the Boulder Middle School Media Center. Adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to the Asbury Park Press, filed with the Municipal Clerk of Keansburg, posted on the district webpage, and posted inside the office of the Keansburg Board of Education, 100 pumper place, Keansburg, New Jersey, on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call?
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell?
Here.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Here.
Mr. Minkowski?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Ms. Ferrara?
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Please rise from the ledge of the ledger.
Flag of the United States of America, and a republic for which it stands, our nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation that was timed, so we would now turn it over to the student representative. I'm going to start with the high schools. We have Mr. Jayden Alexander.
Good evening, members of the board, administration, and community. I'm excited to share some updates on our recent and upcoming events at Keansburg High School. To start, our drama club is thrilled to present this year's fall play, Dracula, on Friday and Saturday, December twelfth and thirteenth, at six thirty P. M. here at KHS. This isn't your typical production. It's a reverse gender adaptation with Dracula portrayed by a woman along with several other creative changes. We're especially proud because this is one of the first school years in which we've been able to produce two shows. Our spring musical is already beginning to take shape and is scheduled for March twenty-two, six. Our National Honor Society had a wonderful time supporting the pre-K Halloween parade, and they are currently collecting non-perishable food items for our annual Thanksgiving food drive. Donations can be dropped off in the KHS main office throughout the month. On November fourth, members of the World Culture Club visited Ms. Bishop's pre-K class. They spent the morning sharing language and culture while communicating an American sign language. This activity was incredibly meaningful, not only for our non-verbal students, but also for our high school students, teachers, and paraprofessionals who participated. Keansburg High School will be hosting its first open house this Thursday from four thirty to six P. M. All eighth-grade students, along with their parents and guardians, are invited to tour the building and learn more about the classes, clubs, and sports available at KHS. Our environmental club is preparing for a clothing spot, swap. Students can drop off clean, gently-used clothing, no children's slices, at room one oh four through Thursday, December eleventh. The swap itself will take place on December thirteenth from ten A. M. to one P. M. in the high school cafeteria. Students will receive tickets for each accepted closing item, which they can use to trade for something new. All leftover items will be donated to Planet Eight. Next, get ready, Titans. Our two thousand twenty-five Powder Puff game will take place on Wednesday, November nineteenth, at three P. M. right after school. Come cheer on our senior and junior girls as they compete in one of the most spirited events of the year. Admission is two dollars, cash only. We hope to pack the sidelines and show off our Titan pride. We'd also like to congratulate our October Student of the Month, Isabel Basillo. Great job, Isabel. For our seniors and their families, FAFSA Night will be held on December second at six P. M. A representative from H E S A A, the Higher Education Student Assistance Authority, will be here to guide families through the financial aid application process. Anyone interested can contact our high school counselor with questions or to sign up.
Our key club will host its annual blood drive on Saturday, November twenty-second, from nine A. M. to one thirty P. M. in the KHS cafeteria. While appointments are recommended, walk-ins are welcome. The class of two thousand twenty-nine is selling pumpkin pie, Rice Krispie treats, one dollar per slice, or eight dollars for an entire pie. Perfect for adding something fun and unique to your Thanksgiving table. And finally, the KHS art club is selling customizable gingerbread ornaments, priced between six dollars and ten dollars. You can place an order in advance or visit their table at the center's sixth tree lighting. Thank you for your time and for your continued support of our students and programs, and happy Thanksgiving from our family to yours.
Thank you. Before we switch to the Boulder school, sir, can you please put down Miss Clayton and the others? Thank you. And Chase and...
Boulder was our most turnout on November eleven. It's a huge better than when you signed up, because it doesn't need the time to return. It's all right, especially to the ranking, the chance to win, for the divisions, for the family member. He thanked them for their service as they were called in front of us. They then went outside to the furnace room and took a American flag and had the photos taken.
All grades took New Jersey field tests in writing, math, and reading the week of November eleventh.
Also, the week of November eleventh, Boulder Middle School, our teacher parent comments is on that Thursday evening on Friday afternoon.
During National STEM Month, science, technology, engineering, and math, the G N T students designed and led hands on STEM activities for the pre-K. They visited the pre-K classroom and guided the younger students through a series of engaging STEM stations. It was a great experience for the middle school and pre-K students.
Boulder had many eighth-grade students going to open houses in November for those who were interested in how district schools, including the Monmouth County vocational schools...
On Saturday, November fifteenth, we had students representing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade participating in the Titan five K. The eighth graders were Chase Preston, Jason Sinitsky, Leilani Reyes, seventh grader Brooklyn Mankowski, and sixth grader Dejona Johnson. We were so proud of them as they did very well in the race.
Tomorrow, on November nineteenth, there will be a guest speaker visiting us on the topic of need to change bullying and violence prevention. The assembly is exclusively for this experience.
For the first marking period, we have ten students who have made the honor roll and two students who made the higher roll. Job well done.
The student council members circulated during all of the lunchtimes as students were on paper turkey feathers that what they were doing before. The feathers were cut out and mounted on large turkey in the hallways for everyone to see and read.
The annual big eighth-grade group picture will be taken this Friday, November twenty-first, and the eighth graders have a chance to purchase one for themselves. This will be added to the previous thirty-six pictures that are already displayed in the entrance to our school. We are hoping to include it in our class of two thousand twenty-six yearbook.
The week of November twenty-fourth will be the beginning of the practice for Boulder Middle School wrestling team and the tryouts for boys and girls basketball, as well as cheerleading. Good luck to everyone.
Deborah Blake and William Frazier were Boulder's eighth-grade November Titans of the Month. Sophia Brier and Esteban Vega-Ramos were the seventh-grade Titans of the Month. Avery Farah and Jasper Phillips were the sixth-grade Titans of the Month.
The Joseph R. Boulder Middle School would like to extend wishes for a very happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we continue, in case there are emergencies, four fire exits. Just take a second to look around. They may be behind you. Moving forward, committee reports?
There's just one committee report in the finance department. There's nothing new to report. The finance meeting met earlier today, and everything was going to be the same.
Outstanding. Thank you. Comments and questions related to board agenda items only will be out on the floor. See no one will close that portion. There's no executive session. The pool ball dominants for October. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Superintendent, schools recommends positive action on the following items: under personnel, number one, professional employment; two, non-professional employment; three, leave of absence, medical; four, leave of absence, maternity childcare; five, leave of absence, maternity childcare revision; six, substitute teacher paraprofessionals for the district; seven, student observations, district; eight, Horton Gilligan comprehensive training for Caruso; nine, advisor positions for Boulder revised; ten, professional development costing one hundred fifty dollars per hour.
Can I get a motion, please, ma'am? Can I get a second?
I'll second you.
Any questions? Can you please explain number eight, please?
Assistant man, do you want to speak to Horton Gilligan?
Sure. So Horton Gilligan has a multi-sensory approach to teaching topics. Most of our staff were trained. These two particular staff members have not been trained yet, so we had a little extra funds to include them, so we're at about ninety-five percent training.
Outstanding. Did it go somewhere? Did it all computer-based or did it...
This is a virtual. It's about three hours. It's thirty-hour training, over ten days, three hours a night, and this one runs from January to March.
Wow. Thank you.
Welcome.
Sir?
Mrs. Clayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes, however, I refuse myself on number ten.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Under policy and regulations, number eleven, policy first reading alert two thirty-six; twelve, regulation first reading alert two thirty-six; thirteen, policy second reading alert two fourteen.
May I please get a motion?
I'll hold it.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Sir?
Mrs. Clayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Under general, number fourteen, district H I B report; fifteen, three-year preschool operational plan and enrollment projection submission; sixteen, disposal of unusable outdated broken furniture equipment for the district; seventeen, acceptance of donation for District, Keansburg Early Learning Center, and Keansburg High School; and number eighteen, in-class state trips. In-state class trips, sorry.
May I please get a motion?
I'll hold it.
Mr. Kitchen and Mrs. Frizell, please. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. For the three-year operational plan and enrollment projection, just so the public knows, do you project a higher enrollment, lower enrollment stagnant?
They basically tell us what we have to project. Do you want to explain this, Isabel?
Yeah, so basically, they're looking for us to be at ninety percent of whatever the first grade number is on October fifteenth times two. That's the formula that they use. So it's a very specific number, and they expect us to be within ninety percent of that.
So whatever the current first grade is...
Which was ninety at October fifteenth.
Yes, and by that, I mean, our expected universe is what they call it.
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen? Can we please make sure seventeen, make sure they get big kids, or big turkeys? Sir?
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yeah.
School Business Administrator, Board Secretary, report. Board Secretary's warranty certification for October twenty-twenty-five certifies that no line item has been over expended in October twenty-twenty-five, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. Carol's certification for October fifteenth and October thirtieth. Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items: one, approved bills; two, approved twenty-five, twenty-six school year added district tuition; three, approved twenty-five, twenty-six home instruction; four, approved twenty-five, twenty-six consulting; and five, approved for year twenty-six I D A C C L A, C C L C supplemental grant application.
All right, please have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second? Any questions?
Could you just explain number five?
It's just for additional funds, the I D A is special education. So I D A is special education, so we're requesting additional funds based on our needs.
Mrs. Clayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yeah.
School Business Administrator, Board Secretary, addendum. Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following: B S one, report received and acceptance of October twenty-twenty-five Board Secretaries' report; B S two, approval appropriation transfers; B S three, receipt and acceptance of September twenty-twenty-five Board Secretaries' report; and B S four, approved appropriation transfers.
May I please have a motion? May I please have a second?
I'll second.
One more. Any questions? Sir?
Mrs. Clayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murrayan?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
All right, I'll now open the meeting for any public comments and questions related to any additional concerns. Please come up to the mic and state your name and address. See no one or move back will close that portion. Any older new communications? I'm going to start with Miss Clayton. We started last time.
So we do have December sixth, our annual tree lighting. I believe there is a fire truck raid, and probably a special visitor from the North Pole. Also, happy and safe Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody for always watching and tuning in with us. I know that your busy lives are always, you know, there's a lot to juggle, but watching us and taking a part in your child's education, your community's education, is always really well appreciated by all of us here. I want to also take a moment to just talk about that appreciation. I want to appreciate all of our staff as we've obviously come into our school year. You know, it's amazing that Keansburg offers so much to its students, from AP courses to extracurricular to programs that not other school districts offer, and it truly is remarkable and to everybody out there that always want to check a look and ensure that information's up on our website, what we offer here at Keansburg. I want to also just stress to all the board members that December second, the N J S B A, the New Jersey School War Association's having their county meeting on December second. Should be a good one. A lot to learn there. And to everybody watching at home here tonight, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Okay, I just want to talk about the election, and I want to congratulate Mr. Clayton, Mr. Kenny Cook, Mr. Mike Minkowski, and Kathy Ryan for joining our board. And people say, well, no one, you know, ran against them. People have a choice. A lot of people voted for our team because we believe what they do. There were some write-ins, but we encourage people to come out and talk to us because this group of board event are our workers. They care about our kids, about our staff, and our community. And, you know, a lot of people are quick to judge, but we do a lot for our kids and our heart and soul. And I'm going to quote you, Mr. Huff, that there's no I in team, and we are a team, whether it's administrative staff, or just every support staff, our teachers, our educators, you know, our janitorial staff, our security. Everybody makes the school success and give our kids an opportunity, and I've never seen so much love and care and concern. So I'm thankful for all of you. I appreciate, I have gratitude, and I wish you and your families a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Cook? Start that. Mr. Kitchen?
Yeah, it's pretty good. I just want to thank everybody who does come. I encourage more parents to please come if you have questions. We see questions posted online a lot. You know, this is the place to come and ask questions, and to everybody who celebrates, happy Thanksgiving.
Mrs. Frizell?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'm going to give a little update. Mr. Bennett, I spoke with yesterday. He's doing well. He's home. He's resting, and he's going to be very hard for everybody. He's happy to be here.
Ms. Ryan?
I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. If you do have a question, don't call a board member. If you doubt, should come out, come to the meetings, come out, voice your opinions. I have to agree with Mrs. Callahan. With this whole voting thing, I appreciate all the votes that the entire team got that day, but if you don't put your best foot forward, you can't complain. So you should come out to the meetings. If you want to be on the board, you should try to run. And again, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Sir?
Just want to remind everybody about the blood drive this weekend. I found out because I had to confirm. So for anybody who doesn't know, I lived overseas for about six years in my job, and I was barred from giving blood until apparently twenty-twenty-two, when they changed the order. So the first time in my adult life, since I haven't been able to do it since eighteen, I will be there, I think, at ten thirty, ten forty-five to give blood. So I'm looking forward to it. Anybody who can come out, please come out. The Titan Five K, I just want to thank everybody who had something to do with that, all the work that was there to put that together. I came in dead last. You can look it up. I apologize to the town, the borough, for any overtime that I incurred by making these officers stay on the course longer than they needed to, and I do appreciate the fire department and the first aid crew driving behind me slowly with the ambulance, just in case something would have happened at the end of that race. But it was a great job by everybody, and a number of students that came out, and I got beat by my twelve-year-old daughter. The school play, I'm looking forward to that. I think it was December twelfth and thirteenth, and the spring musical. It's great to see that we're going to have two things, two drama activities this year, and just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. May I? Do you have any name, Mrs. Attorney? I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I'm sorry. Put it record. I forgot your name, but we'll put it on the record.
That's okay. If it's any old, but you can call me Gabrielle.
Gabrielle, for the record?
Nothing, nothing new. R. N.
Sir?
Just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, I have a couple things. So, Mr. LaRocque, thank you so much for inviting the veterans here on Veterans Day. Unfortunately, I had to fly to North Carolina to give a speech about Veterans Day, so I could not be here. So again, big shout out to everyone who was here, and thank you again for thinking of me. The Titan Five K was Saturday. It was an amazing job by everybody, even Miss Clayton beat Mr. Minkowski. So I'm going a little bit all script here. I'm also going to bet that a couple dollars that Mr. Minkowski passes out when he gets the needle for blood, since it's the first time. But I'll be there at zero nine, zero nine thirty. I'm doing a little chubby. I can do the clickings as well, so I'll be in a special chair.
Special?
Yes.
You're just doing it for the cooking time.
The Huff family and the Board of Education made this annual donation of turkeys in hand to Project Call last week. So if you need a place to go on Thanksgiving, or you don't want to be alone, from eleven to one o'clock in the Trinity Church, five oh three Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park, come out for a nice hot meal. Ladies and gentlemen, I volunteer there, and I have to tell you, if you leave there hungry, that's your problem. I'll also make the same announcement for Christmas because there's a special guy who shows up and he hangs out gifts to little kids, and those kids leave with two or three gifts because there's so many gifts. But again, if you have no place to go and you would like a nice hot meal, Trinity Church, five zero three Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park, from eleven to one. Oh, congratulations to our student athletes, the coaches, and the parents who, for our football team, made first and second team. It's pretty cool when you see Mrs. Clayton's son being first team or second team. These are people we know, so it's exciting that we see that. Got an update on Mr. Bennett? So again, from my family to yours, I want to wish everyone here a happy Thanksgiving. Again, you don't have to be alone because we can go to the church. All right? With that being said, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All favor?
I have the Thanksgiving.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Thank you, everyone, thank you for coming out.